Yep.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge led by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Father God, I pray you will stir something deep within us to stand up to violence and hatred whenever we encounter it. Empower us to speak out and remain firmly in the gap for the weak and the oppressed. Lord, only you can change the hearts and minds of those who seek to bring harm to others. So I pray for a conviction to weigh down upon the people doing violence in our society. I pray for your spirit to change them now, oh God. Awaken people and open their eyes to what is happening and let them be unsettled about it. Bring strength for people to combat violence and hatred with peace, compassion, and accountability. We can do nothing without you, oh God. So we pray for you to do your work in us and through us. I pray this in the almighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one's public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
Yep.
Hearing and seeing none, we will have no public comment. I ask you at this time to put your phones on vibrate or turn them off. Item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes of April 4th, 2023, which will be published on April 20th, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion of our last meeting's minutes? Hearing seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Three A.
Thomas Falgue to give an update on the Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, folks. I need to talk to him, sir.
Would help, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Just so that it's being recorded.
Definitely will be.
Good evening.
I'm Thomas Falgue with the Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, folks. My name is Thomas Falgue. I'm with the Chamber of Commerce, just here to give you an update on the chamber. I'm going to try to kind of come twice a year, once before gumbo and earlier in the year. Last year, the chamber, we finished with a good year. We had, in Iberia Parish, there were forty-six new chamber members in Iberia Parish. Of those forty-six, twenty-five new ribbon cuttings last year. And it looks like we're almost one a week right now, so we're going to be on track to do that again. Developing our leadership programs, our twenty-fifth year of Leadership Iberia. If you have not participated in that program, I strongly suggest you submit an application. I know some of you in the room have. It's a great program. And then we all, we were here last week, actually, with the mayor, learning about city government and what it takes to make the wheels turn, so to speak. Also, our Firestarter Project program is our junior leadership program. It's going on in seven years. Coming up on June the sixteenth, the Women in the Room, we having our Women's Leadership Inspired Luncheon at Antique Roseville. It's a great opportunity for, it's just for women. We do that every year as well. Eggs and Issues, if you've been, it's a great event. We let our legislator come and legislative delegation talk to us and let us know what's going on, what to expect. We're going to do another one after the session that's in right now, when it ends in June sometime in July. Great partnerships with Town Planner. There's a calendar we put out every year. I also have a copy in front of you of the Chamber Compass, which the DeLiberian does for us, kind of highlighting the chamber in the last quarter. We do that four times a year. Of course, we also have our banquet coming up ninth, two ninth from today. It's in Kate, only because we don't have a facility here, but we do know we want it here as much as you guys do. We really do. I really would love to keep it in Iberia Parish if we can. And we know there's some renovations going on at Seer Gates and maybe when the parish gets its evacuation center. So that would be great for Iberia Parish as well. Gumbo Cook-Off's coming up. It's going to be our thirty-two, thirty-third annual Gumbo Cook-Off. We're in the process of planning and the bands are all lined up. We're planning for that now. We know there's going to be some changes where our kids' activity booth is because there's some restrooms going in that area. So it's going to be great for the downtown area as well. I mentioned our banquet. And we also have our very, very Christmas quest every December, really trying to get people into businesses in the city of New Iberia that they may not have always have gone to. And it could be the police department, the different places have done booths where the kids will get a little activity fund that day and they get a little sticker. Put seven stickers. They get in a drawing. The drawings are for all the adults. We're always open to anything we can do better in Iberia Parish. In Iberia, if ever the city is looking for a partner, looking for someone to maybe be trying to recruit businesses. If you need help with that, let us know. We're willing to help any way we can. And if not, that's really all I had to say tonight. I guess any questions if anybody has.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
Do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Are you guys still providing training for businesses?
Say that again.
Are you still providing training for the businesses?
We have free trainings every, we do it through the Small Business Development Center, if I'm saying that right. There's free, we kind of highlight two of them on our newsletter every week, but there's a ton of free trainings. Every now and then, we get some speakers that'll come in and do workshops. We did do last year with the UL Lead Center, an entrepreneurship program. We had lots of people that wanted to participate in that. They didn't, couldn't do another one here, but we promoted the one they did on the north side in Lafayette. So there were people. That was a training that would normally take a business four hundred and fifty dollars, but because of, potential business, but because of the scholarship program they had, they narrowed it down all the way to twenty-five dollars, which was huge for a three-week program.
That was with Jeffrey Stewart?
Yes.
At the Lead Center. We are partnering with him. That will be coming to maybe the next council meeting. And we're actually going to put one on here.
Well, good.
We've been working on that as a council.
That's a good thing.
And that's coming.
That's a great program. And we'll, we'll be glad to help push it if you guys do that.
I will call on you. Thank you.
Anything else?
What else? Thank you very much. Three D.
Kathleen Carrio to discuss National Crime Victims Week.
I just want to start off saying thank you all for having me here again this year.
Yes, ma'am.
This is our eighteenth annual Voice for Victims Rally, National Crime Victims Rights Week, starts April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. And I invite everyone to please come out and support victims of crime because as we know, as we look around, violence is up, not just here, but all over. So as many people as we can get to come out and support the victims of crime, we do appreciate it. And we appreciate the mayor and the council for always supporting us. And thank you again for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three C.
Catherine and Dean Watney to discuss Mental Health Awareness Month and the Bayou Side Family Fund Run.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us to come here annually for the celebration of May as Mental Health Month. We're a little early this year because we want to tell you about our Bayou Side Race, his third annual race. And we want to thank the mayor for the proclamation declaring May is Mental Health Month. It's so important to raising the awareness of mental health in our parish, in our city. And the Bayou Side Race will be coming up May sixth this year, and it's Saturday at eight o'clock. Some of you are already racing in the race. And we would invite you and the public to help celebrate May as Mental Health Month by joining in this race and grabbing someone to be by your side and run the race and be by their side for whatever they may be facing, or families that have been facing some mental issues. We, it's a unique event in that we have several groups that'll run in support of family members. And they find that, that is a wonderful outlet for them. And it's a wonderful event. We'll have some jambalaya and we'll have, we'll have some fun. So it's, it's a great event. And we have some flyers at your desk if you'd like to put them in your business or somewhere or provide it so that we can, we can get the people out there. Last year, we had over four hundred registered, which is a unique event for the city of New Iberia. We're well on our way to that number or more. And so we certainly invite everyone to come out and, and participate in this weight-raising awareness of mental health. Catherine has some information on what we've been doing with that.
Right. And again, we thank the city for your ongoing support of, of our race. The profits that we've generated from this race, we've used in several different ways. We had two programs, one during the Christmas season on dealing with grief during the holidays. That was given by HaSpesificadiana. We also had another program in February on resilience and how to tap into your own resilience. We also had three programs last year for teachers in which they learned about their own self-care, mental health, self-care, how to identify behaviors that might be problems in their students. And then another one on how to identify potential suicide ideation in their students. So the support and from this race helps us to continue in these efforts. We know that statistics tell us how needed it is, especially since the pandemic, which is just exacerbate exacerbated and reinforced problems that were already there. So thank you again for recognizing this mission.
Like to the council to know of how well the city departments, the mayor and his, his, his office and the Parks and Recreation have coordinated this event with us. They've been fantastic. They make it real easy to do. So we appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate what y'all do and have done for a very long time for our community, among many other things, but as it pertains to mental health. So you, you tell us what you need. And look, we promote every fair, every festival, anything we can do. We try to be the administration of yes, because it all builds community. It's all good for New Iberia. So thank you. Thanks for y'all.
And it shows. And thank you. And hopefully one day we won't have to, we won't be coming back here as often.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022 dash 2023 dash seventeen, Amendment Number sixteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds apportioned to inform the public about millage renewal for road program.
Do you have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman David Broussard and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Do we have any public comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none?
Getting up.
Only him. I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Move.
Councilman Dustin Swier and Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas. Thank you very much. Four B.
Ordinance Number 2023 dash twelve, an ordinance levying millages on the twenty-twenty-three tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markot and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item, any public comment? Hearing and seeing no public comment. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Thank you all. Five A.
Special Ordinance Number 2022 dash 2023 dash seventeen, Amendment Number sixteen, and ordinance amending the budget to reflect funds apportioned to inform the public about millage renewal for road program.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by, I think, the Mayor Protem Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item?
I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the public to understand, this is money we're going to set aside to put this back on the.
This is money that we are going to utilize to inform the public. We have agreed or are agreeing to go back out and try for our road millage one more time. And we very narrowly missed it last time by a hundred and thirty-three votes. So when we go back, I think that more education and more discussion in the community so that they understand.
That this is not a new tax.
Yes, that it is.
It is a renewal.
Will not increase the tax, our present tax burden. And that's how we need to tell it. But I think that if we do a better job and invest a little money and some time so that people understand, if they want more roadwork, then the roadwork that's going to end at the end of this year, this is the only way we're going to get it. That we're not going up on taxes. So that is what the money's for. Yes. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So the twenty thousand, are we going to have a game plan of how you intend to initiate this, this money to the public or?
Yes, and I am hoping not to spend it all. I thought that I would come one time for that. We are putting together a plan. I didn't, can't move till after you move, y'all move.
Right.
So when this is approved, I'll be getting with the, our PR firm and getting my staff together. And we'll start to formulate a plan of, you know, what we're going to do. So that's coming.
Time table, whatnot.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I was traveling and we going through some towns and they had a big sign, vote yes, about three quarters of the sign. It has what they want to vote for, but it catches your eye real hard. So put that in your, in your.
I will, but we can't persuade. We can educate, okay? So we will get, a private group has already come forward to form a pack. When they form a pack, they will have signs that will say vote yes. They can voice their opinion. We are just here to educate and inform. So ours will be a little different. Now, we might have a giant billboard with a picture of a pothole and a car falling in it. And it might say, potholes are a problem and we, you know, we need to address them. And we have a plan if you are willing. But we'll just have to watch how we do that because, but I think you'll see some of those signs this time, but they won't be paid for by us. And my city attorney's smiling. I learned my lesson. Sid.
Glad I brought it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
And, and the group, the private group can pass the hat and you can put some money in it.
Yep. Yep. Anybody else? Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Five B.
Ordinance Number 2023 dash twelve, an ordinance levying millages on the twenty-twenty-three tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Discussion, any discussion?
Let's just let the public know that we are not increasing them. They're staying the same.
Yes, yes.
Just so they're aware.
You know, staying the same. Anybody else? Seeing nothing, please vote your machines. Thank you. Six A.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash forty-two, declaring the month of April, 2023, as Fair Housing Month in the City of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Councilman Marlon Lewis and who was the second? I heard a bunch of voices. Councilwoman Dee Johnson-Reed. Great. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this item?
Now, this is.
Yes, ma'am.
A great reminder that housing is really important, fair housing is really important. And in New Iberia, we need more of it. So I'm glad to see this.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Six B.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash forty-three, adopting the Citizen Participation Plan in connection with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three LCDBG Slum and Blight, Blight Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, I think it was Councilman Dustin Swier and Councilman Marlon Lewis. And I've been waiting to get to this one. This one's good.
Yeah.
This is something new. We are applying for a grant, a CBDG block grant, that we would use because that's what it's set for, demolition of houses and commercial property. So it's up to a half a million dollars. There are some hurdles to jump that we will have to jump. It's not a normal, you know, it's, we hired a consultant. So Mr. Richard Minville has retired and Thomas is taking, McGee, who we've used before, has taken his place. He's familiar with the program. He has some questions in. We had a phone conference and a meeting earlier this week on the steps we would take. We'll get some clarity by next week. Once we understand the steps we have to take, we'll take them to see how we can get as many houses as we can ready to go with this program. But I don't have a lot of details yet because we had more questions than answers after we read the form. It's a pilot program. It's brand new. So I don't think they have all the answers yet. But we didn't want to pass it up. It's a point system. We agree that we will pay the administration and the legal fees out of our money because that gives us points. So we'll use demo money we have to pay that. But what that's doing is just compounding how much money we have left to do more demos because they'll take it from there. So once we have the particulars, I probably will need some council help on this, just to identify and see where we're heading. But I don't have all the particulars yet, but this is the first step of y'all basically giving me the permission to go after this money.
So just so everybody's aware, I mean, I had a phone call this morning from one of my constituents about why we're demolishing a lot of these houses. And I just want the public to know is that we're not going after people's houses and trying to tear them. We're, we're trying to tear down things that are not safe and that nobody's actually dealing with. We give people lots of chances, but if they don't do something about it, as a council, it's our responsibility to do something to help the public from a safety and health standards perspective. So I just want to make sure people to understand that we're not just going after houses, just, you know, it's not just about the blight. We're really trying to make sure that it's a safe environment for everyone.
The bulk of our houses are public-driven, complaint-driven, number one. Number two, we only can act on a house in the name of public safety. It has to be some kind of hazard.
Right.
Because there are many things, I always say that, ugly meets code. There are many, many calls we get and many things that people complain about or would like to see something done that we can't because they are still safe and they might be ugly, but they meet the code.
Right.
So we're not headhunting anybody. It's, it's only when it's a safety issue. And if you ever watch our process, which takes many months and many steps before we actually tear something down. People get quite the opportunity to take care of their business themselves. Some do, some choose not to, and then we have to act.
Right.
But that's only as a last resort. Yes, sir.
So I think as elected officials, in my case specifically, behind garbage and pickup, I think that's the second most calls I get is on blighted properties and concerns about unsafe environments. So if anyone thinks there is not a community that needs this, every community, not just this one, it's in every community. So it's, it's a problem that we have to address and any way we can foresee a problem to be solved. I think we need to be on board with it and, and be aggressive, real aggressive with it.
Yeah.
And.
Especially free money.
Yeah, yeah. No, free money, even the money we got, we need, we need to move. And free money's even better, but.
Well, we can do more with the money we.
That's right. So it's just, it's just a big need in our community and also other surrounding communities.
Dustin, you had your hand.
Yeah, like you said, I know you don't have the details as far as how much money we're looking at or so forth.
Right.
But are we going to approach it the same way like we did when we first got this ARPA funding to go ahead and do the demos throughout the district? Or we could do like the, like separate the districts or, or share?
This one would probably be a shared pot, the way I see it. And we're not sure how we're going to identify the, they're all going to have to meet our criteria to be demoed. Don't think we're doing anything any different. But what some of the question areas we have is how we identify them, you know, what, what we, input we get to make that list. So I don't know that it's going to be spent quite equally in each district. Some districts don't have the same problems. In other words, you look at our blight map, which I actually have one, you look at our adjudicated property map. And I want to concentrate, in other words, you might have three or four in your district, you know, some other council members might have ten or twelve.
District five has the most.
Yeah. And so it's, it's fine with me. I mean, that's not, you know, I'm looking to capitalize. We have three years to spend the money. We all know it takes, you remember last year, I got all aggressive and I said we were going to do twenty houses. And we brought twenty houses forward and we did them in two groups of ten and our meetings took three and four hours.
That's why I asked about the same approach.
I know that. And we, I'm getting there. And we buried our city attorney and we buried Jimmy Landry. That, that approach I found didn't, didn't work, okay? I mean, we, we meat grinds at a lot of people and spend a lot of man-hours. So we are going to change the approach. The first question I asked was how long do we have? They said we have three years. Well, that made me feel a little better that we could accomplish this. But let me get my answers next week, but the approach is going to have to be different. Because we cannot do, you know, at a half million dollars, if it was ten thousand dollars a house and they don't cost ten thousand dollars unless they have asbestos and go, those kind of issues, that'd be fifty houses. Well, I'm not bringing a list of fifty houses at once. We would choke the whole system. So my approach will have to be a little different. Yes, sir. That's, that's a very valid point. Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Keep you posted on that because I'm excited about that. Six C.
Resolution Number twenty-three dash forty-four, approving change order number three for the Louisiana Pepperplex Concessions and Restrooms Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Man, they were about to leave me hanging. I was thinking, that's a first. DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Thank you all. Y'all were testing me. Yes, sir. Why don't you tell us about it?
All right. This change order comes from some extra money you have with the state. Is that it?
These are the bollards?
Yeah, the bollards.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So with this fifty thousand dollars, we were able to get the contractor to us on the job site right now. Gives a change order value to install some six-inch marine-grade wood bollards around the perimeter of the parking lot. This is about four hundred and three bollards that would be installed five feet apart. And this would replace basically all the telephone poles that they have laying down on the ground as makeshift barriers. I know in the past, they've had people, you know, driving on the site and, you know, causing ruts and things like that. So this is a way to contain all the parking. So this is the value for, we had twenty-one extra days, the contractor requested, in order to do this installation work.
Yes. And this was money that we got from the state that was tagged from the time we got it, you know, to be something for the Pepperplex. And the telephone poles are something we couldn't afford in this phase one to pave the parking. We're hoping to find funds in the next years to do that. But the telephone poles are something that everybody has complained about. And plus, they haven't really functioned that well. So I thought this was a, a good way to, to move them on. And we wanted to give Richard four hundred bollards to weed eat around. We're going to put them in the, in the limestone so that he can spray around them and won't have to do that because that was his big concern. Yes, sir.
So just looking towards the future, if we eventually, and we will, get the money to do some of the parking lot, are we just going to cement, pave around them or are we going to remove these bollards?
No, we could probably work with the bollards.
Yeah, I mean.
We want to lay it out in a way that we get the right dimensions and everything.
You know, something to think about that if we don't.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
You know.
No, I'd like to keep them there marine-treated. They're going to last a long time. Even when we get money for concrete, we're not going to have money for curbs.
Right.
You know how many feet of curbs that would be? I mean, so.
Yeah, it'd be a lot.
You know, curbing is fifteen dollars a foot. So we're not going to have the money for that. But I, I think making them out of marine-treated will be.
Just in the design aspect, make sure we vision that we're going to do more to the parking lot so we want to keep it, you know.
Absolutely.
Cool. Yes, ma'am.
I'd rather see that money go towards the batting cage.
Well, it's not what it was tagged for. And we're going to, the batting cage is coming. We're going to, and the batting cage, fifty thousand won't do the batting cage. In other words, when you take on a project, you finish a project. So the batting cage is probably going to be, you know, hundred and fifty thousand?
Really?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if we're going to do it, nice. You know, in other words, everything we do there, we, we heading towards somewhere. We turf in the fields. We're going to be able to do travel ball. We're upping the lighting. You know, if we're going to up the game, I'm not saying compete with Broussard in Youngsville. I, I want to be their little brother. There's no way we're going to, we don't have thirty-five million to spend, okay? But everything we touch, instead of running around and fixing problems, partially fixing them or fixing them at okay level. You know, kind of half-cocked, we're never going to get the park up to the level it should be. So if, you know, we could go patch the batting cage for fifty thousand dollars, I don't think we would make it with like, you know, when I go look at the other sports complexes batting cages, I don't need to live in it. It doesn't have to be perfect. But, you know, when I met with Richard and we started looking at lighting and covering it and, and fixing it, it's not, I mean, I don't even have to describe the one to you. You're there all the time. It's rickety. So I feel like that wouldn't be enough. And the parking lot is something everybody has complained about and the telephone poles. And we're actually looking for grant money for, right now, we're looking at grants, we're trying to get to add other things in the park. So it's a high priority, but I just don't think that fifty's going to be enough to do that.
I definitely thought it would do something because it's unusable right now.
It is.
Kids can't safely go in there. But, um.
Jane's got her hand up. That never happens. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. I'm speaking out of turn, but I just wrote a grant for the batting cage.
Oh, good.
And it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So keep your fingers crossed.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that information.
And that's how I knew the budget because, you know, I did the budget. But that's how I knew it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're working on it and I will continue to work on it because it's needed.
What's the timetable, Jane?
I'm sorry?
What is the timetable on the grant?
They should be making a decision pretty soon, um, within the next month.
Oh, that quick?
Yeah. Yeah. And then that's on the list, you know, if we get capital outlay this year for the Pepperplex, that is one of the items that's definitely, definitely on the list.
Okay. I was just curious because these, these seem so random compared to batting cage, but now I get it. I understand. Thank you.
No, cool. Thank you. No, cool. Thank you. Yes, sir. You had your hand up?
I was just gonna add to the point, the, the pavilion we did in Little, just think, I'm sure y'all wanna do a roof over this batting cage like all the other parks.
Yeah.
So, look what we spent just in Little Brooklyn.
Ninety thou- yeah, yeah. Look at that little pavilion. That was, that was ninety thousand dollars for a, how big, David, twenty by forty?
Twenty by, twenty by thirty? Twenty by thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that just gives you an idea. It's, it's, it's up there.
Yeah, good nets are expensive too.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you gotta coat them, you know, do all that stuff, so...
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else? Everybody good? And I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, six D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-five, accepting the municipal water pollution prevention, environmental audit report, and setting action to maintain permit requirements.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Dida Johnson Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Is there any discussion on this item?
I just wanna say to Vince, you guys did an excellent job. This audit report was great. I mean, I only saw one little thing. I mean, I was like, wow, that's huge. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I know he thought I was gonna say something else.
He just laid his head up there.
No, he didn't. I mean, it's excellent. It really is excellent.
Cool. Well, then if there's no other discussion on this one, please vote your machines. All right. I gotta work with that guy every day, man. All right, six E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-six, appointing Cedra Davenport as tax collector for the city of New Iberia.
Motion. Well, I don't even have to ask. Okay, I have a motion. And a second by Councilwoman Dida Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
Congratulations, Cedra. Very proud of you. We're gonna miss Miss Cynthia, but...
Any, no other comments? Yes, sir.
I'm just glad to know she's sticking around, that's all.
You, you are right about that, 'cause the one thing I know is I didn't wanna lose her.
No. Good job in keeping her in there.
I hate to see Miss Cynthia leave, but we're gonna be in good hands and, you know, everybody knows Cedra should be doing our payroll. That's the most important person. So, we all know her and have known her for a long time. And insurance and all kinda stuff. So, I think it was a natural progression to select her. I think she's gonna do a great job. I have all the confidence in the world. So, you know, I'm excited and I think she is too. And, uh, Miss Cynthia is gonna go on her time and, uh, and I think she's excited about that. So, any, uh, anybody else? Any other discussion?
She had a good teacher. Every time I go in, they're right by each other, standing by side.
Sure she can still pick up the phone too.
She'll be late. Don't call me.
She'll put a call block.
Every, every chance I, Miss Cynthia, every chance I had, I come pick on you. Every chance. So, you've always been highly recognized by a lot of us.
Yep. So, any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great. Thanks for taking the job. 'Cause we had some little discussions, you know, that took a little while, you know? I'm excited. All right, uh, six F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-seven, appointing Craig Gerard as director of wastewater department for the city of New Iberia.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Cool. Uh, Councilman Dustin Swier and Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, do we have any discussion on this item?
Can he come up to introduce us, 'cause I don't know him.
Right.
I need to see who my next victim is. No, I'm joking.
That was the truest statement of the night.
I'm Craig Gerard.
Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. I hope I get some compliments.
Well, you do as good a job as he did and you will get a lot of them.
Got some big shoes to fill, but...
Absolutely.
You do. And we have, what, a six-month transition? So, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, Craig comes to us. He's a licensed, uh, civil engineer, which we thought was very important. Uh, has some construction background as well, which is a good thing. Um...
Any John?
Yeah, he'll be around for a while.
Yes, ma'am, and that's the hope. That's the hope. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
And he also got good pedigree. His family lives here and, uh, local contractors, and I've known his mom and dad, so I know he's gonna do a great job if he, anything, so, uh...
I appreciate that.
And look, you got our support. If you need it, reach out. And I'm sure you got Vince's support, and I can't tell you how many days you gotta support for though.
Well, he can tell. It's on his phone.
How many more days of support Craig got?
Seventy-seven?
Yeah, seventy-seven.
Yeah.
He tells me every day.
I'm sure he does. Well, you better take those days and suck everything you can. I'm trying. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this to me is a success story, 'cause now we have born and raised here in this community, and he's standing up here to take a position with the city of New Iberia. So, that's what I keep on...
Just like his predecessor.
Exactly. So, that's what I keep on...
You know, I mean...
I keep pushing that narrative, you know? It's good to see young people stay home.
We hire people from our community that stay home.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that's awesome. I mean, that just does nothing but, uh, breed more success, because they care about our community. They know our people, they know our community, they know our issues, uh, as well as what's good. So, that's, that's always a good, a good plus. Yes, sir.
Welcome and congratulations. All I want you to do is answer the phone when somebody told you this backing up in their house.
I'll probably be there with a squeeze.
Probably will. Yes, sir, you will. Yes, sir.
So, so Brooke's not saying nothing, but Brooke, he's gonna be in charge of your drainage project. You know that.
I am fully aware.
Okay.
Rerouting project.
She has a problem and she, you know...
I don't wanna hound him straight away, you know?
Oh, yeah, she's just...
We can talk about that later.
Yeah, I'm sure you're getting an outload from Mr. Vince. It's a lot, a lot going on in the community nature.
We do have a big, and he knows about it, but we have a very large project, the biggest project we will have done together, you know?
Right.
Can be a good project.
It is, it is.
But we'll be in touch, I'm sure, a lot. So, thank you for taking on the job.
Yep.
Thank y'all for having me.
But don't let Vince off the hook less than seventy-seven days.
No, I'm not. I'm not. I don't plan on... Oh, that's what's been happening?
Hey Vince, how long you been here?
Seventeen years.
Wow.
We were here when we put you in office.
Mm-hmm.
You've been a real good ride. You've been a real good ride, sir. And Miss Young, I'm looking at you a younger, like we have here, you know? Please, uh, it's been very nice working with you, Vince.
Thank you.
Not to work and chat at all. You ju- you get the problem done before we have to jump on you. You know, you listen to the public a lot and you've been, you helped my district a lot. And thank you, and I hope I can give you the same remarks seventeen years later.
I hope so too. Share you with.
All right, anybody else?
You gonna be here? I was here. No, I was here with...
And, uh, I, oh, yes, ma'am.
Speak up.
Say too much sometime. I just wanna say, you know, uh, congratulations to both. Uh, I know Cedra, I don't know you, but, um, you know, welcome. And we hope to have you both stay around for a long time.
Yep.
You know, maybe not quite as long as your predecessor in one case, but...
Dee's like, no way.
That's the record.
That is a record. One day, you never know, you might wanna do that. Fifty years is a record.
It is.
Fifty years in one day.
Well, welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right, seven A.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash thirteen and ordinance amending general ordinance number three oh four of the city of New Iberia relative to chapter forty, historical preservation, article one in general, section forty dash two, historical, historic districts established.
Do you have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and who had the second?
Thank you for having me. That's mad.
One of us.
Okay, I don't know, so... Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Marla Lewis. I appreciate that. Jane, you wanna, y'all wanna come up? Brenda, you not coming up? Come on, Miss Brenda.
The reason for this request is, um, and I put together a, a short presentation. Where is she? It was my pleasure to interview Miss Brenda, and I've known her for a long time and had a lot of delicious meals at Brenda's diner. She's known throughout the world. But I wanna tell you a little bit about why we're requesting this expansion of the existing historic district. It's been through two public hearings. Um, the historic district commission unanimously recommended, and Miss Rosalyn Garrett, who is the chairman of the historic district, is here. And also the zoning commission, um, as required by state law, when you're expanding the boundaries of a district, then, um, the zoning commission, um, actually moves forward with that as well. So, about preserving places and, and, you know, everything is unique in our community, um, whether it's architecturally significant or historically significant. And, um, as you see by the red era, this is the expansion. And, um, to include four oh three and four oh nine West Pershing Street. This is a section of the ordinance that we had to revise, because our chapter forty, um, in our code of ordinances does, um, specify and outline the, the boundaries of the district. So, that change, um, is taking place as well. So, and here you see the aerial of the expansion, and we continued down, um, Corrine from West Washington, where the existing boundaries ran along West Washington. We, we came down, um, Corrine, um, um, headed east on West Pershing and then up St. Jude and included that, that area as well. Miss Brenda Steiner. So, um, it's looked as if, as it's looked for a number of years. And she's been at this location for quite a long time, um, serving not only our local citizens, but Hollywood citizens as well. Tommy Lee Jones and his wife ate at Brenda's diner when they were filming in the Electric Mist. And, um, he's kind of a standalone person. We see him, you know, around town, but not really that, I'll go in and not that friendly. But he really took, um, Brenda under his wing and actually wanted her to go to Texas when he left. You're not gonna let her go. So, Brenda Steiner is, um, is one of the structures that we wanna include in the historic district, because we wanna do everything possible to help Miss Brenda start her business up again. If it's through grants, if it's through small business loans, whatever we can do to bring her business back to life, we wanna help her do that. 'Cause she is so popular with her home-cooked foods. It's just unreal. Now, next door looks like a, a really bad building in need, but the building is historically significant, because it was the first dentist office of Dr. Henderson, who was our fir- the first black dentist in New Iberia. Miss Brenda bought that building, and she does have plans in the future to, you know, to kinda revitalize it. And, um, it's got adequate parking for her diner, so when she gets back up and running, you know, she's got plenty of parking. And she does have a large lot behind the diner that she could expand with a little help. This is my favorite part. So, I spent a couple of hours with Miss Brenda, and, um, we talked about, you know, when she started and her mother taught her how to cook when she was very young, and she would say, pay attention, pay attention. And when she decided to open the restaurant, she told me that if I decided to open a restaurant, um, it would only be successful if I was doing it for the love of cooking and not for the money.
Amen.
And I think she's continued that tradition throughout the years. So, we talked about her business and, and we, actually, she laid out a few, I'm sure there are many, many more, of, um, her, um, magazines. And I just picked a couple of them, Ro- Trip Advisor and, um, and Road Food, Real Food, Road Food, and, um, Best Things Louisiana. She was featured in many articles that are known throughout the world. And these are some examples. She had pictures all lined, lined out. Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Oh, well, um...
It's restarting.
She did have magazines and, and we sat there and looked through, um, postcards and letters, and, and there were just so many nice comments. And, you know, from some of her, some of her customers and patrons and tourists that came in and enjoyed her meal. So, you know, um, the purpose of the request tonight is to expand the boundaries of the district to include these properties, so that she would be eligible to apply for various grants, and we can, you know, help her.
Yes.
As we do all of our, our small businesses and offer opportunities from there. You have anything you wanna say?
No, I would just like to say for many years I've been serving New Iberia. I'm a celebrity international and a woman in the Hall of Fame. Thanks to Mr. Tommy Lee Jones.
New Iberia's Leah Chase, right?
That's it.
And the German TV station.
Mm-hmm.
They called me to, asked me to show them how to make gumbo. I'm not ashamed of sharing my recipe. So, I gave them the, I told them the day to come, and they came. That Friday evening, it was five of them. They, TV station and the two guys that wanted to learn how to make the gumbo. I set it up for them. They made their own root, 'cause the key to the gumbo is the root. My mother taught me that. And I had prepared them with a seafood gumbo and a chicken sausage gumbo. I walked them through everything. Plus, when they came, I had window units. And the TV station said, Miss Brenda, we can have them, window unit. I said, well, honey, y'all sure gonna sweat. Because the root, the key to the gumbo is the root. They didn't mind it. Boy, they were sweating, big drop, the cameraman. They made their root, showed them how to mix it, showed them how to cook the rice, and the gumbo came out excellent. I said, that's y'all gumbo, y'all could eat it. So, they enjoy the gumbo, the rest of the gumbo, they're taking it to go. So, they said, Miss Brenda, how much we owe you? I said, y'all don't owe me anything. It was a blessing to show the German TV station my recipe. They made me famous. People from all over the world. I didn't charge them. Wasn't about the money, 'cause my mother told me if I was going in it for the love of the money, I was gonna have a short haul. Put that love into that food, and that's what I did. So, when they got ready to leave the Monday morning, about eleven o'clock, they came by Miss Brenda and brought her eight hundred dollars. They entered the gumbo cook-off. They came out first place.
Oh, wow.
I didn't tell anybody. They said, Miss Brenda, we appreciate you. When we get back to Germany, we gonna pump you up. We gonna put you on every nation TV, Miss Brenda's diner. That's who made me famous.
Oh, that's wonderful.
The Saints had a game about two or three years ago. Everybody was calling me. Miss Brenda, you on the Saints game, you on the Saints game. I said, you sure? Put your TV on. I put my TV on. I said, well, that's Miss Brenda. So, if Miss Jane came by, she said, Miss Brenda, I have stacked a major magazine that Brenda's diner in from all over the world.
Yep.
Made me a celebrity international and a black woman in the Hall of Fame from New Iberia.
That's awesome.
So, Miss Jane said, Miss Brenda, do they pay you for all these magazines? I said, no, ma'am. It's just a blessing for love to do with food. Y'all have a blessed evening, and if y'all choose to put me in a historical grant, I appreciate it. But it'd be well worth New Iberia, 'cause I put them on the map.
Any discussion? Comments, questions?
Yeah, Miss Brenda, I, I watched you a long time go and get my food, and you gave, you, you gave them the recipe, but I know you didn't give them the rest though, 'cause it's all in the rest. It's all in the rest. It's the love, that's right.
The time you put into the food. You cannot worship food. You gotta put that love into, I don't care how long it take. Start early enough and your food gonna be good. You can't worship food. People still, when you're opening, when you're opening. Love, whenever the historical, let me remind them, build...
That's it. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great. We will help any way we can, and, uh, we, we thank you for all you've done.
Thank you for putting us on the map.
That's it.
That's what I wanted to do. Those that never tasted my food, I wanted to give them complimentary lunches. But Miss Jane told me, y'all don't accept it. So, when I open up, I'll go, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, uh, now we move on to eight A.
Kevin Zerang to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty-twenty-two to February twenty-eighth. Kevin Zerang to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Evening, council. What we're going to do is go by summary, if that's okay with y'all, what we've done in the past. So we're doing this through February, that'd be four months, which is thirty-three point three three percent, or a third of your budget. So the general fund budgeted revenue is twenty-three point four million. We're at eight point four, leaving us at thirty-five point eight eight percent of our revenue budgeted. Expenses are thirty point four, budget actual is eight point seven. So expenses, we're at twenty-eight point six five.
Can I ask one question before you move away from there?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any reason why city court's a little higher?
City court is at, their revenue is fifty-nine point nine three. And that's mainly due because we missed the projection on the pre-trial diversion.
Okay.
And the revenue they're coming in, that's a shot in the dark. We don't know because it depends on, you know, fines, trick, and tickets and stuff there. So their expenses are at thirty-eight point one two. Kind of goes with the pre-trial diversion, the more we're doing, the more we're going to have to spend on that. But we're only.
It's still at five percent higher, I was just checking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Legal, same thing, their revenue is higher, pre-trial diversion.
Right. I mean, you don't have to go through all of them, I was just asking about that particular because the expenditures was a little higher.
Okay. Does anybody have questions about any other lines on the general fund?
Transfers, Kevin, our transfers are tracking right with our full month projections already, thirty-three and third.
Yes, sir, what's done, what we do for the transfers is we break that out to monthly installments. Beginning of every month, I make those transfers, so that's why those numbers.
That's why you expected to stay close to the full month average.
It will, unless we see that the transfers aren't needed and we'll clean that up in periods, so eleven or twelve.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Parks and Recreation, budgeted revenue of one point six. We're at nine thirty-three, one twenty-three. And the reason why parks and public works are high is as the same as Ad Valorme. We're collecting that and we accrue for it actually at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then at the end of the year, we write off the bad, bad portions. Expenses, one point six, actuals three hundred and seventy-five, which is twenty-three point four percent. The expenditures are a little low because we have some capital outlay that we have not done yet.
Right.
Kevin and I review the budget at six months and we are now talking to department heads to tell them to speed up.
Spend that money.
Or slow down, but in this instance, there is a little speed up that needs to happen to, to make those investments back into the community. So that's something that I think you'll see on the increase. It needs to.
Sales tax fund, that's the nineteen sixty and the salary. So ten point four, budgeted, three point four, actuals, putting us at thirty-two point six seven, pretty close to the thirty-three percent. Expenses, sixteen, nine sixty-five, three eighty, actual is five point seven. And that's thirty-three point three because those are budgeted and we, same as the others on the transfers. Under the general fund, it's thirty-three because we're doing that equally each month. Public safety fund, that is the nineteen, two thousand eighteen tax. Four point one million budgeted, actual is one point three. We're at thirty-one point eight six percent of revenue. Expenditures, four point one and actual is one point four, thirty-three point two nine. Again, that's the same thing, we're doing one twelfth equally each month. Highway fourteen EDD, revenue was budgeted to be at three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We're at a hundred and twelve thousand, putting us at twenty-nine point four two percent revenue.
Correct question.
Mm-hmm.
The money that we have to match with the love trust type is coming out of this, this fund? I know love is doing the project and we're going to reimburse the store. It's coming out of store fund.
It's coming out of the TIF district, not the.
Right.
Yeah, TIF, this fourteen, highway fourteen.
That's the highway fourteen EDD.
Yes, that's where it's coming.
Okay. Okay.
So it looks like all of our revenues are just a little low.
Well, that is because it's all sales tax revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a projection, some of these had only been in effect for a year, year and a half. So we didn't have a whole lot of historical information to forecast. And one of the problems we have with the new ones, which was fourteen, the one eighty-two and the twenty-two's Economic Development District, is some filers are still trying to figure out if they are required to pay it or not. So what we're seeing is, is they'll pay the tax and then they'll come back and refund it because they discover they're not, or vice versa. They didn't collect it, now they're finding out they're due. So it hasn't flattened out to be consistent yet. So it's hard for us to actually project.
Okay.
So.
Some to pay attention to.
Yes.
So on the expenses, it was five hundred and eleven thousand, we're at one sixty-eight thousand. So we're at thirty-two point eight. And that would be transfer outs. Highway one eighty-two, twenty-four thousand, we're at eleven thousand, putting us at forty-three point eight three percent revenue. Expenses are two thirteen, we're at sixty-seven point nine two dollars, putting us at thirty-one eighty-nine. And the only expense it has is the collection fee that's allocated to it for the sales tax by the school board.
Yeah.
The twenty twenty-two Economic Development District, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, actual is two sixty-four, putting us at thirty-six point four five percent of the revenue. Expenses, seven twenty-three thousand, actual is two hundred and five, putting us at twenty-eight point thirty-one percent.
Now that's the, that's the one that's funding the Pepperplex, correct?
Yes, that's the one that's being, but it's also being used to pay the debt service on the applicable bond.
Right, for the Pepperplex.
It gets split.
Yes, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, half, half of it goes to operation and maintenance.
Right, half goes to, right. I'm just trying to make sure because of the name.
Yeah.
And that's going to be, it doesn't happen equally over the month because we will pay it when it is actually its time and we pay that twice a year.
Right, okay.
Okay. Next is Pepperplex, budgeted revenue of one point oh four six million, actual is three hundred and sixty-eight, which puts it at thirty-five eighteen. That's kind of, to, to make sure everybody understands, that includes the transfers from EDD
Okay.
to cover its operating expenses.
Right.
Actual, budget revenue, expenses is four point four, actuals are at two point five. And that's high because right now that's all capital outlay and that doesn't happen equally or proportionate each month.
But we do think we're going to.
It's all bond.
It's all bond, not capital outlay.
Right, it's bond.
We call it our capital outlay, but the money's derived from the bond.
Correct, but it's still, it's for capital outlay project.
When they think capital outlay, they're thinking we got it from the state.
Oh, no, no.
Just clarifying that it's from the bond.
This isn't state capital.
Right, no, I understand what you were saying. Yeah, it's our own capital outlay.
If we do, if we do get capital outlay.
I hope we do.
Correct, if we do get capital outlay, we put it just a fun, to this fun, right? Use that to the Pepperplex, if you give one per se for the Pepperplex.
Well, what we have been doing.
It'll be tracked separately.
Yeah, what we have been doing is we've been tracking that under planning and permits. Now there are some of them.
If we do get capital outlay money.
It goes on the.
Yeah, we just have to watch our titles.
Yes.
We're going to get, already you have to stop and think about what it is.
Exactly.
Because we call one a TIF, it's an economic development.
Right.
We call it the Pepperplex, it's, it's.
Right, we just.
The more we do in the different parts, we might kind of.
Clarify.
We put the nicknames less, next to them or something, so we all know what pot we're talking about.
Exactly. And so I'm assuming that, I mean, our expenditures are high, so we think we're going to end the year on track? Or do we think we're going to go over?
I'm projecting for us to be on track.
Yeah.
Because we are about finished with the improvements to the ball fields, the concession stands. And that's all being covered under the bond that we took out.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to run, we're going to, you know, let's face it, we're going to run out, we'll come to our limit, you know? So that's not going to really go over our, what we could borrow because we're going to spend it all and be done. What we can't do, yeah, what we can't do is, is add new project until we get new money. So then the rest of it will go toward O and M. And our O and M, of course, we don't make any profit yet because we're not really open yet. So no money has come our way of, you know, revenue yet. But that will come as we finish the park.
Okay, I mean, just checking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's good stuff, I mean.
Any other questions? Next is Public Works Fund. Budgeted revenue is three point six, actual is one point seven, putting us at forty-six point thirty-seven percent on our revenue. Expenses are three point five, actual is eight hundred and nine, so we're at twenty-five point three eight percent. That's another one, we have capital outlay.
And they haven't spent the money.
That hadn't been done at that point. This last month, Joe has made some purchases on equipment, so that should show up in the next.
Yeah, the next month, they should hit.
Okay.
We waited a little bit during the year, we might have waited a month or two too long, but we kind of waited to see how some other things were going to pan out and things were positive, so we pulled the trigger.
Good.
And we're six months in, so it's not, you know, we like to review this, especially hard at six months because I can reverse engines if I have to or speed up. And so in most instances, you see, we ended up speeding up. But to be a little cautious with the amount of projects we have going, I wanted some of these things I throttled back till six months and said, okay, now it looks like we're good. Our sales tax is okay, we had a few little things that were a little bit lower, but I'm thinking, okay, you know, now, now we can hit the gas.
Okay.
Garbage, four point two million revenue, we're at one point two, putting us at twenty-nine point eight one percent of revenue. Expenses are four point two, budget actual is one point four, putting us at thirty-three point forty-five. Section eight vouchers, one point four million revenue, actual is five hundred and fifty-two, putting us at thirty-nine point thirteen percent of our revenue. Expenses are one point four, actuals is five hundred and eighteen, putting us at thirty-six point four nine percent.
And Haley continues to grow that program. She's getting more families in, that program has done nothing but grow as she's been in charge. So that's a, that's a good thing. We, that was one that we were not going, you know, I mean, it's, it's picking up, that, that's good.
Yeah.
Last is wastewater's fund. Before I get that number, those, the same as we do with permits and planning. That is largely due to the revenue is grants and bonds and loans. So I've adjusted for the projects that we have not done. So therefore, I don't expect the revenue until we do it.
Okay.
Because it's one of those, it's a reimbursement, we don't get it until we spend it. So it was skewing the number, so I would take them out. So we have ten point one million in revenue, actual is three point seven, putting us at thirty-six point nine one percent of the revenue. Expenses, five point six, actual is one point five, putting us at twenty-seven point two one percent of our expenses.
Right.
Any questions?
Comments, questions?
I just.
Yes, ma'am.
For clarity, the highway fourteen EDD and the highway one eighty-two, that's our two TIF districts.
Yes, ma'am, and I'm going to start putting the nickname on the side of them because it does get confusing.
And the other one is the special district with the Walmarts, the last one.
The last one is the.
Yep.
That's.
Walmart and the drugstores.
Yep.
But those are actually.
Which is tied to the Pepperplex. So we're going to get some nicknames behind because especially if we get capital outlay money, that's going to be another list, you know, more stuff.
Well, according to the documents that we signed, they are to call Economic Development District.
I understand, but we can, when we do our little budget report, you can put in parentheses a little nickname next to us because every meeting, I'm telling you, we're going to get jacked and the more things that we put. So we'll just start putting in parentheses. You got the names right for the, for our regulations, but for us, we're going to end up putting some little names next to them.
It just helps clarify.
Well, when you start to think about something, you don't have to worry about what pot am I talking about, you know?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, we have to expand the agenda, we have an item to expand the agenda. That will be next. So.
Go.
Motion to expand.
Moving on.
Got to know what it's about first.
We got to at least tell you what we doing. I might get.
Rolling right along.
My mother's trying to go home.
I might get dangerous. So Lainey, you want to?
Yep. Expand the agenda to discuss and consider the following item. Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-eight, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Civic Plus for software to be used by New Iberia Parks and Recreation and the Pepperplex. The purpose of this expansion is to authorize the mayor to execute this contract before the April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three deadline, since the next regular New Iberia City Council meeting is after that date.
Okay, motion to expand.
Need a motion to expand and I have it. And I have a motion by Councilman Dee DeLagbatter and a motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on expanding the agenda? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines to expand. Okay. Now we do a public. Now I need a motion to open a public hearing.
Don't move.
Back in.
Uh, Mayor Paul Turner, we can go off the line and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott to expand the agenda. Do we have anyone, what's that?
Public comment.
For public comment, right, right. Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Dee De Johnson Reed and who was second?
Who?
I don't really know.
I don't, whatever.
Councilman Dustin Swit. Thank you. All right, now we need a motion and then we'll have to vote on the resolution.
Motion to vote on the item.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Dee DeLagbatter and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this motion? Now what this is, this is a computer, I'll tell you what it is first. This is a computer program, a system that Richard brought to our attention that both the Parks and Pepperplex would be able to utilize. It, it does a lot of things from when we start tournament play, that we actually get travel ball, it tracks all the teams, Heather found some uses that she could use it for, there's some day-to-day uses. So we had a meeting and both of them thought this was, you know, worthwhile software. So we want to get it, we'll get it now. And the reason for expanding the agenda was we could lock the price in. And then we will come back to do an ordinance. This locks the price in and lets me sign to get something immediately. But when we enter into any contracts after twenty-four months or longer, we have to do that by ordinance. This is something that will remain. So this gets the stopgap so we can lock the price in. Then we'll be coming back to y'all to go through the ordinance process because it's something that will re, a service that will reoccur for longer than twenty-four months. So now, do we have any questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah, is this a fifty-fifty split pot between the Parks and the Pepperplex?
That's what I'm going to try to do. Did you have any discussion with anybody about that, Kevin?
When I discussed it with them, they were okay with it.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Okay. All right, cool.
So is.
Oh, he had his hand up.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Get your next.
Just Reed, do it really, rather quickly and just one concern, I see four hours of virtual training. That seems like a really short time, just four hours allotted with this initial purchase.
Kevin talked to him.
I mean, that's enough, I'm just looking at it.
We had the conference, we had two telephone conferences via Zoom with Heather, Lloyd and Richard. And that is live training, they both felt comfortable with the four hours. They also stated that if additional time was needed, that Civic Plus had no problems providing additional.
As long as the employee, our directors are good with it, I'm good with it. I just saw it, four hours is pretty short for a new program.
Well, that, in addition to that, there will be some onboarding and the whole time it's being implemented. The way they explain it, basically they're going to have a teleconference, they'll get trained and then they'll be given homework to do. Basically, from the next meeting, we need, we're looking to have these items set up. And then they'll come back, the next conference, they'll go through that information. So it's a lot of, kind of like they'll be in school.
Like hands-on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So they felt comfortable with it.
Good, good. Yes, ma'am.
So when you look at the description, it says branded public portal health center. Who's going to use the software? Is this software is going to be used internal? Is that who this?
That's the software that we would be purchasing through them to allow the public, i.e. teams and the participants to have access to it, to see the schedule, to see the practice, to see their rankings.
Okay, so, and I'm assuming that they're going to provide support, so.
Yes.
If something goes wrong, I mean, they're gonna call us, but then we have to be able to turn them over to another help desk.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, do we know of any other organization that's using this software?
Youngsville, Broussard are currently using.
Richard's familiar with it because he used it when he managed the Broussard.
Okay.
And like I said, you can't do travel ball tournament without it. I mean, basically, this gets us up to speed with these other communities that we're trying to work with and be their little brother.
Right.
If we don't have that, I don't think we can get in the game, if you wanna know the truth, so.
Okay, and so the annual reoccurring services, I'm assuming it's actually just the use of the software and the support and the maintenance.
Yes, so we pay the upfront to get the software, after that is the upkeep, the maintenance, the support.
Okay.
Now the software also can be used to schedule the use of the pavilions, the use of the slimen, so they're able to rent the facilities and to sign up for the adult classes and the youth classes.
That's where Heather thought, which might really be good.
Yeah, so the, well, that's what I'm trying to find out, so like, if I want to register for a class, I would be able to go on there and register.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay.
Anybody else? All good, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. I'll let her comment. Thank you, that's, I got another step, Doug.
We already closed that.
Yeah, we did.
We did a couple comments.
Yeah, we had the end. All right, next item is council remarks, I'll start with you, Brooke Markcott.
I just wanted to thank all y'all for holding down the fort for Acadian Acres whenever I was absent our last meeting. We all appreciate you guys, also.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dustin. If y'all don't have anything to do after this meeting, go to the Pepperplex, it's halfway open and there are games going on tonight. That's where we're going after we leave here, that's why we have a little baseball player back there in the corner. It's really cool to go out there and see people utilizing the field and the concession stands open, all that stuff. So if y'all can, come out and visit, that's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, I said I was gonna address gun violence in our community, but I thank Councilwoman Ledbetter's prayer. Thank you for that prayer, Councilwoman Ledbetter, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Broussard.
I was out of town, I see Mr. Decort, you got a nice distinguished award from the Kane River.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not gonna say what it is, you bring it up yourself. It's nice, but it's more nice that Kane River took over the stage building, that big white, I talk about white elephants, very important to every city, that we fill them up, you know, come use them again. And that's a good part of town that they came in and they have always been in our town, so we wanna thank the owner of Kane River. And I see Citizen of the Year, my first cousin Johnny Endes, we can't say enough about him. He's a founder of the LHC Group, has been giving health care and everything else to the community and to a lot of church organizations. You can't say enough about Johnny, you know, so I wanna compliment him for his Citizen of the Year. But I really wanna get your distinguished award, like you say what it is.
Sorry.
I'm reading the paper, it was nice.
I'll make my comments brief, but I did attend a grand opening of the pecan, Kane River and pecan bar, and I will say, you know, I call it the house of nuts, but the food is amazing. It's like, you really can't leave, so it's an asset to this community, I really think it's gonna do well. Also, the state legislature's in full session, I'm keeping track of bills that may affect the municipalities, so far so good. We've been engaged with our state legislatures in making sure that we don't get, you know, something that we're not familiar with or aware of, but all looks good currently. Also, you know, as an elected official, it always prides me to say when you vote on something, you accomplish something and you see the good to the community. It was amazing Saturday at opening ceremonies at Pepperplex to see the smiles on all the kids' faces. When you see the smiles on the kids' faces using the facility and, and working, and they work, you know that you've done, you've done something rewarding for the community. So kudos to this council and the mayor for going on a limb and getting that accomplished, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I wanna offer my condolences to the Pope Durov family on the passing of Ms. Melvina Pope Durov. She, she was ninety-nine when she passed away earlier during the week. Little Brooklyn has really lost one of its matriarchs, you remember her, the roving forward.
Uh-uh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, indeed. Uh, she will be greatly missed in the community. Also, a reminder, Neighborhood Watch is gonna be on April the twenty-seventh this month at six o'clock PM at the Slimen. It would normally be this coming Thursday, but it's pushed back to the twenty-seventh. So come on out and, and join us at the Slimen at six o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to remind the public that we are offering the free certified home buyer training class on April twenty-ninth. It said Zion Hill Christian Fellowship Church on Main Street. If you are someone who are thinking about buying a home, please attend the training, it's free of charge. Normally you have to pay at least seventy-five dollars. The certificate you receive will be valid for two years, so even if you're not ready to buy right this second, this is something that you can hold on for two years, and so we're asking people to please come. Louisiana Housing Corporation is delivering the training and we wanna get as many people ready to buy a home as possible because we wanna get to a point where we have more homeownership in New Iberia. The second thing is, is I wanna remind everybody that this Saturday, to go out and vote, there, we're voting on the bond issue for Iberia Parish School Board. It's really important that people go out and vote. If you haven't had an opportunity to find out about it, please go on their website and you can find out what's, you know, what they're gonna do with the money. But they're gonna be, you know, moving some schools and improving some schools and, you know, anything they can do to help our children is gonna be money well spent. And then the last thing, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Lewis to help me with the dates, we have some SBA training that's coming up with the Hopkins Street Economic Development Group, and so we're inviting the public to come out and learn about the services. Do you remember the exact dates? It's next week, but I.
April twenty-seventh, from six to eight.
Okay, perfect, April twenty-seven. At the Weston Park, from six to eight, thank you, because I couldn't remember the exact date. April twenty-seventh from six to eight. All entrepreneurs or future entrepreneurs, please come out and learn about these services. We're trying to get more people to start businesses in our community because when we start our own businesses, we keep that revenue here and we can employ more people, which means we can buy bigger houses, pay more property taxes, and then the city can grow. It's all one big cycle, okay? So please come out and join us for that as well, thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Ditto to Ricky, myself, I had the privilege of attending the ceremonies Saturday morning. And like he, like he said, the look on the kids' faces was all, it really sealed the deal. I mean, just to walk on that turf and feel that, I wish we kinda had that back when we were kids, but, but I'm glad to see that coming back to life in a way. And I'm not taking it away from the people that worked so hard for so many years doing what they're doing, but they're pleased and thankful as well too, so, that's it for tonight, thank you.
All right, I just have a few, Spanish festival this weekend, that kicks off Thursday and runs through the weekend. There's a ton of events, it's a, it's a really good way to connect with our Spanish heritage. We were founded in seventeen seventy-nine by the Spanish, so it's a good tribute to many, many families that are still here. So that's a fun event going on all weekend, most of the stuff's downtown. We have the Voice for Victims Rally, which is the eighteenth annual on April twenty-fifth. We have, on the twenty-ninth, we have probably the biggest art walk I think maybe we've ever had. So we've got tons of artists lined up, I think that that should really be good, that's another fun event. I also attended the Pepperplex opening ceremonies, and it is very rewarding to see, and the amount of little kids. In other words, when Richard kinda changed the game plan when he got here and said, we're gonna spend the money and turf the four small tee ball fields, you know, he said, that's the future. If you're gonna build it, you're gonna rebuild it with those young kids. And to see the amount of young kids that were out there, really, I, I think we got, I knew we had the right guy before, but he definitely is right on, hit the nail on the head of, we need to start with those little kids and they were out there in droves and they were excited, and I think that it will only grow. It needs to, it needs to be a facility for our entire community, and I'm hoping that it continues to grow and reach kids from all walks of life, all areas of our community, and that it succeeds beyond our dreams. But I wanna thank this council because we took some chances to get there, and we're not finished yet. But I, I appreciate that we all, you know, put in, and we did take a risk, we took a risk together to do this, but it's, it's gonna pay off and I think that that was a good sign that the community is, is gonna support it. Kane, yes, ma'am?
Just, next time you have something like that invite, the whole council is possible?
I would be glad to, I, I, I didn't, nobody invited anybody, to tell you the truth, but.
But it should be.
Note taken, yes, yes. I found out about it the day before, but note taken. Kane River Pecan, I do wanna welcome them, they had their grand opening and it was a lot of fun, they gave me a little award. But it's good to have them and they are our poster child for taking advantage of those tax credits. The amount of money they spent and the amount of money they got back from the state is, is phenomenal. So those tax credits are what let that business come downtown and do that, and that's directly from being a National Historic District. That is one small example of taking advantage of anything we can, and that's what we need to continue to do, is take advantage of any program we see by the state, any, any incentives we see, anything that we can do in every area of town. You know, Hopkins Street's an Economic Development District. Most of the town fits into the opportunity zones that nobody that I know of has used yet in our community. We have twenty percent federal, twenty percent state tax credits in the Historic District. Expanding the Historic District allows, that's not part of the national, but that's part of the State Historic District, that would allow for twenty percent tax credit. So, you know, anything that you think of, from Kane River spending millions of dollars to Brenda's Dynasty trying to remodel so she can get reopened, that's just perfect examples of, of any of these type of programs we need to be aggressive and take advantage of. So it's good to see that in our, in our community. With that, our next meeting is May the second, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank y'all.